Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the regular meeting of Township Council for Monday, December 1st to order. And of course, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the Kosh Salish peoples and in particular, our valued relationships with the Kaitse, Kwantlin, Matzqui and Semiamu First Nation. Get a motion to adopt the agenda moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Rint. Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'd like to move an amendment to the agenda to defer O1 to December 15th.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Richter? It's on the amendment. All right, councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I guess I'm just interested in knowing why we would delay that to December 15th. It was brought up at the last meeting and then became a notice of motion for this meeting. So I'm wondering why we're now asking for it to be moved to the December 15th meeting.
Yeah, I'd just like to look further into the council procedure bylaw.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call the question on the amendment. That carries with councillor Coontz, councillor Martins, councillor Richter, councillor Whitmarsh opposed. Now back to the agenda as amended. Councillor Richter.
Yes, I'd like to remove item I1 under P on page 10 for this agenda.
Is there a second to that?
Sorry, I1 under where?
Resolve to close?
Seconded by councillor Coontz. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Richter?
Yes, I wish to withdraw the motion because I made the motion. And this is the third week in a row I've tried to remove the motion. And so far have not successfully been allowed to do so.
Okay, so is there any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call the question on that amendment. That amendment is defeated. Councillor Bailey, councillor Ferguson, councillor Pratt, councillor Rint and Mayor Woodward opposed. Is there any discussion on the agenda as amended? Seeing none, call the question on the agenda as amended. That carries, councillor Richter opposed. Get a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of November 17th. Moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on the minutes from November 17th? No, I'll call the question on those. That carries unanimously. Move on to reports to council. Bylaws in process to be abandoned. I'll move the recommendation, seconded by councillor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on E1? Seeing none, call the question on E1. That carries unanimously. Item E2, 2025 B.C. Vision Zero Road Safety Grant Program. Moved by councillor Pratt, seconded by councillor Rint. Any discussion on the recommendation? Seeing none, call the question on E2. That carries unanimously. Item E3, Celebrate Canada Grant Application. I'll move the recommendation, seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on E3? Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just had a question. It says in the report that the events would be enhanced if we get the additional 50K. And I'm wondering what the event looks like with the 90K budget and then how that looks different with the 140K budget. Question through to staff.
Through your worship, yeah, the 90,000 will supply us the base event for Canada Day celebrations. And if we are successful with the grant, we would, we could add on things like live entertainment, more bouncy castles, items like that. This year it's based around the grant wants a soccer themed basis. So we're looking at items like that because we do also have the World Cup.
Okay, so the 90K event is prepared and going forward as planned unless we get the grant. And then you're saying we would just add some additional things to it, more opportunities for people like bouncy castles and possibly some live entertainment. Is that correct what I've heard?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. If I may through a chair, maybe to some staff, maybe Mr. Winslet or one of the other. I know it's not in the report, but I just, I just wanted to ask you how we were doing with for attendance and I guess attendance of events and also I guess we've had drone events. I don't think how popularity that is, is going if I may through a chair.
I guess councillor Ferguson specific to Canada Day or just in general with our community events?
If I, you can do, you can do whichever one you want. I know it's, it's not in the report. So you can do the best you can with the event.
Yeah, Canada Day is an annual event in particular, since we've changed a bit of a focus to be more family friendly and added the evening activities, whether it's fireworks or the drone show. I think each year is growing and becoming more and more popular. So Canada Day itself has been very popular. And in general, I think we've, this council's put a real focus on enhancing some of our other community events that have been the last two or three years. Holiday Lights coming up at Williams Park is a good example where it's become extremely popular. So I think all of our events are seeing an uptick in general from the community.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to comment, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that sometimes we're over subscribe, over popular because I remember going to one event on Canada Day that, one of the stadiums, I believe that will be there. And it was, we had to open up almost the whole stadium and staff worked extra hard to make sure to accommodate the citizens. Very, very, very popular on a drone event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on E3? Seeing none, call the question on E3. That carries unanimously. Item E4, 2026-27 B.C. Air Access Program Grant Application. Moved by councillor Pratt, seconded by councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on E4? Councillor Pratt.
Thank you, worship. And I just want to commend staff on the pursuit of the application. Obviously through the long process that we went on to undertake and create a new strategic plan for the airport. Rehabilitation of runway 0119 became a very clear priority. And I'm looking at the breakdown of the budget moving forward. Happy to see that the, any remaining funding, if we are successful in receiving the grant, will come from the airport reserve. And so this is a very critical project and happy to see it move forward.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, also want to thank staff for this application going forward. I had a question around the success or non-success of the grant application and whether or not we would still be wanting to move ahead with the project, whether or not we get the grant. It is close to five and a half to six million dollars for the total project, oh, actually almost six million dollars. And is that a critical nature that we need to go ahead regardless of the grant and that the grant is helpful? And I guess the second part is, is the grant successful? Is it guaranteed that you'd get both years? Or is it just one year at a time and we would find out as we go along? That would be very helpful. Thank you through your worship to staff.
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh. So specifically with respect to this grant, it's administrated through the Province B.C. Air Access Program Grant Application. Historically, we have applied to this specific program and were unsuccessful due to it being oversubscribed. So staff have now taken a different approach and had several discussions with staff there. As you can note, the previous application last year had phase one as completing the runway pavement rehabilitation. Here, phase one is actually upgrading the airfield electrical and lighting systems as that is more critical. Whereas the runway item, there is still some life left with the pavement rehabilitation. And that's specifically due to the fact that we have a runway crack seal program. So the item itself, if you see the capital project description for the airfield electrical is still categorized as high. In the event we are not successful with the grant, we would need an alternative funding source to essentially fund the airfield electrical and lighting system upgrade to the runway. And that would be, we would advise council that we were unsuccessful and therefore look to council to see if there was that alternative funding source or staff may propose an alternative funding source to proceed with the project. And that may be also part of either the 2026 budget process or may be considered in the 2027 budget process.
Okay, thank you. Just, just to clarify then, if unsuccessful, we may look to other funding sources or it's possible we would delay the project because it may not be of the critical nature. Is that, is that a correct way or an accurate way of saying it?
Through your worship, councillor Whitmarsh, the characterization of the first part is correct. The second part is it'd be up to council to determine its priority. Staff right now know it as a high priority. So council would have to give the direction in relation to funding it or potentially looking at it at an alternative year.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, looking at this, I'm really hopeful that this submission is, is successful. But in case it's not, in conversations with the, the staff and the users at the airport, I, I am hoping that this will still go forward because we're talking about things like they can no longer get parts for parts, for some of the systems like the lighting and that. And that could actually take it down to if the lighting is not replaced and dealt with, there will be no night flights allowed. So I am hoping that this grant application goes forward. But regardless of that, I am very hopeful that council okay's going forward because this airport is a very significant regional application in so many ways. Training and, and other aspects of it. And I know that the user groups there would like to see that we get on this as fast as possible.
Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yes, through your worship to staff, when, when would we expect to hear an answer about whether we're successful or not? And is that for both years or just one phase at a time?
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh, the application deadline is June 16, 2026. So we do anticipate hearing in spring 2026 of the result of the applications. And then I believe the, in the event we're not successful, there's another opportunity for the following year for the application as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great, signal of discussion, call the question on E4. That carries unanimously. Item E5, Fort Langley Senatath for renovation. Moved by councillor Pratt, seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on this? Councillor Richter?
Yes, I agree that the safety issues seem to be of impressing importance right now because of structural concerns. I was just wondering, as the Heritage Committee had spent time giving their input on how to conserve the memorial, if the, this report will be circulated to them.
Through your worship to councillor Richter, as noted, the Heritage Advisory Committee, there's been several consultation meetings conducted and also I believe they've been provided the assessment report as well from the consultant. This report is publicly available, but staff can always endeavor to specifically provide the report to the committee as well.
Okay, and should we have to rebuild the entire thing? Can we put a plaque on it that notarizes when the, the date of the original Senatath? Or cross on the Senatath?
At your worship to councillor Richter, staff can potentially explore that item and just ensure that it's within the total cost and the budget constraints. But in the event, I just want to clarify if it's to have the specific date of the Senatath formatted within a plaque, that potentially could be explored?
Yeah, just that because if, if it ends up when they start looking at this thing that it just absolutely has to be replaced for whatever reasons, that we acknowledge this is a replacement to the original and the original was erected on whatever date it was erected. Something to that effect.
Through your worship, councillor Richter, I believe staff can definitely explore that item.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I don't know if there's any other speakers, but I do have an amendment. So the amendment would read that if replacement, this would be a second therefore clause, that if replacement is necessary, that the existing Senatath be preserved and displayed at Salishon Place. Yeah, I think the reality is, is that once we know for sure if the, the Senatath that's currently there needs to be replaced, I think there is, I would imagine widespread desire to see that, that existing Senatath preserved in some way, shape or form. If it's not on the site, it's, it symbolizes a lot of history and there's a lot of emotion and a lot of memories attached to it. And so I think it'd be appropriate to display it in a, in a prominent place. And I can't think of a better spot than Salishon and would look to staff for recommendation and guidance on how to do so. But I do know, for example, that the, the troops over at the Alder Grove Base have been keen to get involved and help in some way, shape or form get on the community. So I think that some way of incorporating them in the relocation process, if it does occur, would go a long way.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I'd actually been waiting to speak on the main motion. I think we're on an amendment right now.
We're on the amendment, yeah.
Yeah, so can I wait until we're back to the main motion?
Yeah, we can go back if the amendment's successful. Either way, we'll be back to the main motion. Councillor Ferguson?
Okay, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with councillor Pratt, you know, with what he's doing and what he's suggesting here. And also he did suggest briefly that working with the Engineers Brigade, I figured, I figured it's 192 in Alder Grove. So that's another thing. If we get the order of the engineers involved, helping out consulting, be able, win, win, win for both the Senatath Legion, the community and the engineers. Thank you. Yeah, I really like this amendment and fully support it. And, and in discussions with the, the base up in Alder Grove, I think they would love to be involved in this. And I think it's a, a great idea and a good way to initiate that because the commander of that base has three other bases back east and they're all involved in the community heavily. And they were asking us in discussion if they could find some ways to interact with the community to ensure that their skills don't degrade. So I think this would be an excellent opportunity to start that relationship.
Great, signal of discussion, call the question on the amendment. That carries unanimously. Now back to the main motion as amended. Councillor Coontz, go ahead.
So as this is, I went to the, it was a little gathering in August, I believe, with some of the stakeholders. And, you know, we were all looking at it and there was, you know, there's definitely some older folks in our community who, who just, you know, they don't really, they can't imagine that this is going to be replaced. And I guess, you know, out of respect for them, but also knowing that our staff have done incredible work around this. I, I fully support, you know, that they're going to do everything that they can to restore this. So I guess this is just basically to the, to the, the good folks who are maybe questioning, questioning this is just that I really, really hope that we don't have to replace it, that we can just preserve it in all of its, you know, for another hundred years if, if that's the case. So those are just my comments. Thanks.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. So back in April, we had a report from staff with regards to some options for plazas connected to the Senatath. And I believe staff were going to reach out to various community groups and stakeholders about that. And I'm just wondering if that's coming back at some point, if that will be part of what's being contemplated here for the actual Senatath?
Through your worship to councillor Martins, I believe there's direction given at the previous council meeting. And then also once a consultant was retained, they recommended continuing stabilization efforts just due to the newly identified deficiencies. And there's a high chance that the cross itself remains unlikely to remain structurally sound. But I'll just have Mr. Rule confirm that as well.
Yes, thank you. Through your worship, so I believe the plaza, that was from the initial report, we had given some options. We did consult with the groups, but really the, the focus went back to the Senatath in its current condition. So we've been focusing on that and we can bring back the plaza options at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Great, signal of discussion, call the question on E5 as amended. That carries unanimously. Bylaws for first, second, third reading, resounding application number 100771. Bylaw number 6144, moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Ferguson. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I was wondering if this should go out for public input, whether at a public hearing or I guess a public hearing. So just give it first and second tonight so it could go for public hearing.
Mr. Coontz, you want to address that?
Through your worship to councillor Richter, the item before you is for first, second and third reading. It's a plan compliant item. It's a residential, it's creating two residential lots. Therefore, the Local Government Act does not allow a public hearing for a plan compliant residential item. Therefore, there would be concerns with council directing this to a public hearing.
Was, sorry, I didn't catch that. There would be concerns with council?
With council giving it first and second and directing a public hearing for an item where the Local Government Act does not allow that.
Okay, thank you.
Great, signal of discussion, call the question on G1. That carries, councillor Richter opposed. Bylaws for final adoption, I1, Spirit Stage Mobile Bleachers, bylaw number 6179. I'll move it, seconded by councillor Rint. Any discussion on I1? Seeing none, call the question on I1. That carries, councillor Richter opposed. I2, Fraser Valley Intermunicipal Business License, bylaw amendment, bylaw number 6175, 6176. Moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Bailey. Any discussion on I2? Seeing none, call the question on I2. Carries unanimously. I3, Temporary Boring Bylaws, bylaw number 6177, 6178. I'll move it, seconded by councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on I3? Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Question through to staff. In the, in the report here, it talks about the facilities renewal, sorry, the acquisition for the facilities renewal fund would be complete. Could you maybe just give a bit more information on what it means for this to be complete?
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh, that's the project itself to be complete under the facility renewals.
Okay, I, yeah, maybe I misunderstood. I was, as I was reading, it says the acquisition for the facilities renewal would be complete. So you're saying that would, that would complete the amount of money that's needed to finish the facilities renewal? Is that?
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh, the project itself.
Just the project itself. Okay. And, and how, how is this money paid back? It's almost 10 million. How is that paid back?
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh, I believe the report to council itself had the debt servicing and also the funding source associated with that. But I'll just defer to Ms. Ruff on that as well.
The funding for that is general taxation.
Okay, so does this, does this amount, is this temporary borrowing, is this added to our overall debt? Or is this from not considered part of our overall debt load that we carry?
Through your worship to councillor Whitmarsh, the, the debt itself that council has authorized has actually been reduced. The, this is a part of that authorization as the bylaw was already final. Now it's, these are temporary borrowing bylaws or mechanisms used to actually be able to obtain the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Great, signal of discussion, we'll call the question on I3. That carries, councillor Richter opposed. I4, Fees and Charges, bylaw amendment, bylaw number 6161. Moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Pratt. Is there any discussion on I4? Seeing none, call the question on I4. That carries, councillor Richter opposed. Does anybody wish to make a mayor and council report? Does anybody wish to make a mayor and council report? Counselor Ferguson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the privilege of attending the Zero Waste Conference in Vancouver last week. And we in Metro Vancouver are way ahead of others in the world as far as recycling, as far as waste energy, as far as people be responsible for their, their waste material. They also had guest speakers from all over North America and the world regarding ways in which we can recycle better, reuse better. The one part that was very, very interesting, it's a part of clothing. And people should be more and more responsible for getting rid of their clothing either by some sort of recycling or some sort of a use through agencies that can use them for other, other reasons. So it was a very, very good conference and I'm very proud of what Metro Vancouver, and of course, the township of Langley is very involved with recycling and reusing and other things as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to commend both community in Fort Langley and Alder Grove. I'm sure many other members of council, I think I saw most at either the Alder Grove Christmas tree lighting or the Fort Langley Christmas tree lighting ceremonies. And as per usual, they were fantastic. Alder Grove seems to be getting bigger and better every year. Same with Fort Langley. It was cold, but it was incredibly well-attended. And I just wanted to say huge congratulations to the organizing committees.
Yeah, just like to comment the paddlers at Fort Langley. I haven't been in a dragon boat for over 30 years and had the privilege of being in one, in fact, in Santa's boat. And Santa was a, a, how did they put it? Yeah, a sizable Santa. And he was sitting at the bow of the dragon boat and looking none too comfortable, I might add, hanging on to the rails. But it was a very, a very interesting event to watch. We paddled Santa in and there was a pile of kids waiting for him at the top. And I have to congratulate the people who organized that in Fort Langley. Excellent event, a lot of fun, and my dragon boat skills have degraded deeply since I was on those teams.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Any other reports? We'll move on to other business item. Oh, sorry, information, that's correct. N1 through 4. Oh, okay, go ahead, Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, Metro, we had a workshop on Friday for the Water Committee. And I have to say, some people on that committee were surprised that while they're looking at decades out, even mentioning as far out as a century, there is no mention whatsoever of this long-term planning dealing with the aquifer situation in Langley. The effects of climate change, the effects of increased population and that. And I have been hacking at them to get a transmission supply line put through the south and the east of, of Langley for future considerations. I drove that one pretty hard and have assurances that the people studying water in long term will start looking at our aquifer situation because from what we're getting, and there's a, actually a workshop coming up from LAPS saying that gonna, that our aquifers are possibly being affected. So I'm going to make sure to stay on water at Metro to make sure that our aquifers are protected and that we get more pipe water out here. Yeah, thank you. I gotta make a statement and then I'll, I want to ask staff a question. On Friday, we were actually at Metro Vancouver talking about our budgetary things and about issues regarding the liquid waste and drainage. And the opportunity came up for flood, flood management. And as we all know, a number of years ago, with atmospheric rivers, we had flooding all over the place and the water knows no boundaries. And so I asked Metro Vancouver how they were making out with, working with the Fraser Valley Regional District and other, and they commented they're also involved with an organization that I think Counselor Bailey and myself went to, the Lower Mainland Flood Resiliency Group, and looking at ways of flooding and flooding management in the future. So my question, oh, it's a combination of our, of our flood systems and our drainage systems within Langley and how we're cooperating with the region and making sure we have good fluid drainage system, cleared pipes and all that, if I may, through the chair.
Through your worship. So the township doesn't have any regional Metro Vancouver drainage systems? There's only a few jurisdictions out there that do, so we're not involved at that level, but we do work with our neighboring jurisdictions on flood convey, flood and water conveyance.
Yeah, I didn't want to push you on the spot, Ms. Rule, but then, thank you very much, because I think the message is that all folks within the region should make sure they maintain their drainage systems because that could lead to flooding and overflowing into our sewer system, which is what they call a red, a red day, which is a very, very difficult and hard on our system. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to items for information. Draw attention to M1 to 4. I'm going to start with M2, just get that, get that done. Make a motion that a 10-minute presentation to council be approved for January 2026 on the Surry-Langley Skytrain Project, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question on motion from M2. That carries unanimously. Anyone else have anything on items for information? Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to highlight M1 to highlight and draw attention to the fact that the accessibility plan will be coming forward in hopefully early 2026. I'm excited to see it. When you read the report on what the staff have heard from the community, obviously, it talks a lot about the built environment, it talks a lot about different tangible things as well as intangible things that we could be doing to make our community more accessible. And I'm pretty, pretty pleased because although this council has obviously done a lot of big things and big projects, we've also taken a lot of small little bets here and there, I think, to improve accessibility, whether that's the Baffle Gates Pilot Project we approved, whether that's looking at redesigning how we do the letdowns at intersections or inclusionary signing, inclusive signing at signage at parks. Looking forward to seeing what else we can do even better when that plan comes forward in 2026.
Counselor Martins?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to speak on, it's on page 11 in the agenda, page 10 in the plan, item C, Opportunities for Improvement, to provide more covered rest areas in parks and along trails. And I just wanted to highlight, I had a really interesting meeting with some folks with regards to albinism, people living with albinism. And one of their challenges is a lot of the play areas and parks are actually open to the sun, direct sunlight, which is very dangerous for them. And I have seen in some contexts where they have a kind of like a shade, a sunshade, rather than an actual physical structure over playgrounds. And I just wanted to put food for thought into staff on that one. I thought that was an interesting one and perhaps maybe not a lot of people consider it that way when it comes to accessibility, but it certainly is one for them. So if I could just, I'm sure the chair to staff asked that be considered as well.
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, it's duly noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on M1 through 4? Great, seeing none, move on to other business. I'll move O2, seconded by Counselor Rin. Is there any discussion on O2? Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, on this particular item, I'm wondering, first of all, is a question through to staff, the, the water is, are all of these units multifamily townhouses and secondary suites, are they having meters? Are there being metered? Are there meters on these, these, these homes? Or are they in the process of being metered? What's, what is happening? I'm not aware of what's going on here.
Dear worship to Counselor Whitmarsh, so there is a volunteer water metering program. And essentially, it's a volunteer program that property owners can ask for metered. Mr. Rule can potentially give a bit of a higher, an update on where the water metering program is at. This specific resolution itself is essentially staff's interpretation of, and if it's not correct, the mover themselves can clarify it. It's to essentially review and consider any adjustments for the utility rate bylaw for, this would be for specifically for flat rates, not the metered, specifically for multifamily townhouses and secondary suites. And then I'll just have Mr. Rule just provide a brief update on the volunteer water metering program as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through your worship, we, we do have the voluntary water metering program where residents and strata corporations can sign up to have a meter installed at their premise, which then takes them off of a flat rate onto a metered rate where they pay for what they use. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me as far as what we've installed to date, but we do have a contractor engaged and they're out installing water meters.
So, okay, I guess where I was, is at the end of this motion, it says that an applicable meter size is fixed capital portions. Maybe you just could explain what that last part of the sentence is referring to.
Yeah, I can do that. And maybe Mr. Rule can jump in if I don't catch it all, but just since it's my motion, that's referring to your capital portion of your water levy, even if you're metered, is based upon your meter size. And there was a certain first round of determining what people pay based on their meter size. And I think it's appropriate to have a second look at that before we see a higher volume of meters installed for multifamily strata developments, that maybe we can compare the savings for someone based upon the meter size for their development, compare that to what a flat rate person pays, and maybe have one last look at that before we finalize the 2026 bylaw, where we're starting to see and expecting some of these larger developments to potentially be voluntarily metered in 2026. So right now, we would look at adjusting the capital portion that they pay for their meter size, depending on how many units they have.
Okay, and the intention of this is to be applicable starting in 2026?
It's applicable now. It's in the, I mean, Mr. Rule, you can confirm it's applicable now. It's in, it's in bylaws and this would potentially adjust it along with the budget process?
Yes, that's correct. We have a base rate. If you're metered, depending on the size of the meter, there's a base rate you pay in there and then your usage is on top of that.
Right, okay, so, so I know, okay, so it's in, in use now, but when we talk about the adjustment, is this adjustment to take place in 2026? Is that the intention of this motion? Or is the adjustment intended to take place in 2027 after the 2026 budget's been approved?
The intent here is to make some adjustments for the 2026 billing calendar year over and above, and potential adjusting with council is already approved, I believe, about a year and a half ago, a year ago or so. Is that soundable right here, Ms. Rule? That was about a year, year and a half ago that those rates were determined?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Yeah, I think it's on that. So this would have one last look at it, and I think in relation to some real-world scenarios, now that there's some more experience with the program and we're starting to see applications. In some cases, if you have the same meter size, but you have a larger number of units, you would see a substantial change and maybe some other developments with a fewer number of units would be paying more. So I think it's appropriate to look at that along with potentially seeing if staff can come up with some ideas on seeing a townhouse pay less than a single-family home if they're both on the flat rate. And then if they meter, that would be a different system. So as the transitions to water metering throughout the township, there's going to be two systems, two, two rates. And there's going to be some transitionary period that has to be worked through, and I think this is having one last look at it before the 2026 year is finalized.
Okay, thank you.
And this is in direct response to delegation. I think there were two delegations earlier this year asking us to look at this. So this is in response to those, those delegates. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I was wondering about this in the context of an earlier council meeting. Didn't we authorize money to be expended on a consultant to look into this back in June?
Yes, we did. It's the intent of this motion that we would no longer wait for that process and this motion would supersede previous direction.
Okay, well, if the process is underway, has the consultant provided any sort of interim reports?
Mr. Kirchner?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, that motion was, I believe, from June 23, 2025, and staff have not brought a report to council and we're in the process of bringing a report to council. So if, in the event this motion is passed, we would, as Redwood has highlighted, the intention is to supersede that motion. So we would essentially, if there's any information that has been gathered or useful information, we would incorporate that into the review, consideration, recommendations for adjustments for council's consideration within the 2026 utility rate bylaw.
Okay, so just want to clarify. So has the consultant produced any interim reports?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, I don't have that before me at this time. It still was a work in progress. My understanding is there's no final draft of any report.
Okay, because I really think perhaps we should wait for the consultant's report before we amend the 2026 utility rate bylaw. That's the point I'm making. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bailey?
This issue dominates discussion at the Metro Water Committee, especially when you get one ad, a very strong advocate in West Vancouver versus a, an antagonist in North Vancouver, and the two of them go at it constantly about water meters. But one of the, the best things about listening to these conversations is the ability to detect leaks with water metering. It is incredible, the amount of water loss that goes on, you know, they're looking at 10 to 15% roughly of leaked lossage with water. And water metering is proving very effective in detecting these leaks. So water meeting, metering dominates so many different ways at the water, the Water Committee at Metro. So it's very interesting to see how it's rolling out in comparison to what we're doing voluntarily.
And I appreciate the point, Counselor Bailey. It's often overlooked that that's one of the main benefits to having a significant penetration of voluntary water metering. Many communities have it and their, their use of water per capita is much lower because of that water leak detection issue. And in the years ahead, as people choose to stay on the flat rate watering system separate from those who are metered, they will be bearing the cost, unfortunately, of water leaks in that flat rate system that are detectable on the metered system. And I think as years go, years go by and the transition continues, that'll be something we try to highlight to residents, that there's a benefit for everyone to moving over to this system. And that's one of the main ones. We would get water system, water usage down for, for everyone in our community over the long run. Counselor Martins?
Thank you. Yeah, my, my question was similar to one earlier from the June 23, 2025 council meeting. That's when we had the couple of delegations. And we did at the time have a motion, we approved $100,000 for staff to engage a qualified professional to conduct a financial study to provide optional flat rate structures for council consideration that may be applied to single-family strata and multifamily properties in the township of Langley. So I feel this is somewhat a duplicate, except not specifying a bylaw in that motion. I'm just wondering how it is that we're moving ahead now and feeling that we are doing this in-house, if we felt a half a year ago, we needed a qualified professional at the cost of $100,000 to do this work? What's changed? When are we anticipating this report coming back from the QP? If I, some insight would be really helpful.
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, so essentially, if, if the motion were to pass, then we would look at the status of that report, would look at what information is available for staff to consider and bring forward and review, consider, and recommend as a part of the 2026 utility rate bylaw, as, as now the timelines are quite critical as we are looking at bringing the utility budget forward for council's consideration relatively soon. So we would look at all options in the event council directs us.
And if I can, as a follow-up, was there an anticipated date when the QP was to have this review done by?
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, there was no anticipated date, and I believe the motion from June 23 did not specify a specific date. This motion itself is a bit more prescriptive in the sense that there's a specific date it need, it would need to accompany the 2026 utility rate bylaw budget.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did, I supported it then and I'd support this now. I'm just, I- Just, I hope that the direction that we choose lines up with what the qualified professional report's about. Thank you.
Counsel Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, Worship, and I'm pleased to hear that this will be sort of pursued in conjunction with what the consultant has been, is looking into so far. Personally, this has been one of the most exciting directions that this council is heading in towards this metering process and metering system. It's, I think, very fair that when we initiated this process and people were surprised and aghast to find that for the entire history of the township, we've been operating under this system where it was, it was pretty unequal for those who are living in condos or townhomes versus those who are not and who are using less water but still being changed, charged the same amount. And so I think that, yeah, heading in this direction, trying to speed the process up so that people are not unfairly penalized when they're using less water, whether it's on a metered system or on the flat rate system as that transition is occurring, I think is a great thing and a great step forward, so I'm happy to support this.
Yeah, I noticed that businesses are not included in this. Would that still be considered, or are we just focusing on multifamily and townhouses?
Commercial and industrial are already all metered.
They are all already all metered? Okay, thanks.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, yes, I got a brand-new water meter. Voluntarily had it installed. I did want to say that a number of years ago, this is a giant step forward, a number of years ago, we in the township of Langley had another type of system which we charge people for water, a water utility. This is a step forward, people voluntarily having to put together a water meter in their home. I also think, as we're reminded, as Counselor Bailey has indicated, that by members of the Metro Vancouver Board and other communities, I believe, are 100% metered, and they did it a long time ago, and they actually got subsidized by the province and putting meters in every single home. So that was done many years ago. We at Langley were still more of a rural community then and did not do that. So the decision's a big one, the importance of moving forward. I'm looking forward to addressing some of the concerns expressed by the delegations of those that wanted to have a different system, a fairer system. So I'm looking forward to see how this will be applicable and how we can have more fairness regarding other members of our community, I guess townhouses and multifamily units. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the question, call the question on O2. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. I'm going to move O3, seconded by Counselor Rint. Any discussion on O3? Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'm just wondering what the anticipated costs that will go into the budget for Langley Meadows Park would be. Do we have an idea?
Dear Worship to Counselor Richter, at this time, we don't have a specific figure. It's preliminary. We would essentially, as a part of the process of developing a capital sheet, we would, and considering it for the 2026 capital budget, we would have further cost.
Okay, well, all right, I'll wait for it to come back in the budget, but, because I think it's well-needed in Langley Meadows Park, but I was just wondering if we had an idea of what that cost could be. Thank you.
All right, so you know the discussion, call the question on O3. That carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Counselor Pratt?
Oh, sorry, no other business, just an item for closed.
All right, Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the January 12 meeting of 2026 be canceled.
Second?
Yeah, we're, once upon a time, it used to not be as busy around that time of the year, but when you start looking at, a lot of people talking about the time of the year, and especially when it goes into depression and workload and all that kind of stuff, I think it would just be a really good move to delete that one meeting, to let people decompress a whole lot better after coming off a very hectic part of their season. An awful lot of people this time are dealing with issues of economics where they're, they're having a hard time at that time of the year, and I'm just thinking that that can include, along with mental health benefits and that, even including some of our staff.
Yeah, sorry, is there a motion on the floor here to cancel that meeting?
Yes, there is. Counselor Bailey, do you want to repeat your motion? Go ahead.
Yes, to delete the January 12 meeting.
Great. Counsel Martin?
Was there a second for that motion?
Ms. Power, can you confirm that there was a second for that motion, please?
It was Counselor Ferguson.
Okay, thank you. If I could, through the chair to staff, I know we've already canceled a couple of meetings in 2026, and I'm wondering how many council meetings we have remaining with this council in 2026.
Dear Worship to Counselor Martins, in the event this resolution is passed and one meeting is deleted, would be at 13 meetings.
Okay, and how many typically do we try to schedule in a full calendar year?
Full calendar year, I believe, is 24, is 22. However, it is a general election year, and during general election year, there is a reduction in meetings due to potential deleting of the meetings in September and October.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so you know discussion, I'll call the question. That carries, Counselor Kings, Counselor Martins, Counselor Richter, Counselor Whitmarsh opposed. Counsel Bailey, do you have any other business? Counsel Bailey, go ahead. Do you have any other business?
No.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you, Worship. I know that earlier in the, in the meeting, we decided to move item O1 to following meeting. I did just want to make a comment regarding that and make sure that, and inform council that, you know, I'm certainly appreciative of being part of the acting mayor rotation. However, that rotational spot for me was taken by another member of council earlier on in the term that would have been given to me. And, and so as I mentioned last day, and I will mention again today, it's my intention to see that the remaining year divided between the final two people that have not yet served, and that's Counselor Ferguson and Counselor Martins. And so as this council is going to think about and deliberate for the next meeting, I think it's important to understand that it is my intention not to serve in the acting mayor role, but to be divided equally between those two counselors. Thank you for letting me share that.
So you would refuse, you would refuse to serve as acting mayor?
It's my intention to not serve as acting mayor for the reasons of equity and fairness on this council. That's correct.
Okay, well, I can certainly confer with staff whether that's an option for you to refuse it. I don't see why it wouldn't be. I suppose you could just refuse to, refuse the remuneration, I suppose. We, you know, I appreciate the heads up. We'll definitely confer. I'll definitely do some, some looking into that. I appreciate the heads up. Maybe it's a more complicated issue than some have perceived in the past, and, you know, certainly save my comments for the 15th.
Great, thank you.
We'll certainly have some. So, Ms. Power, I'm going to move a motion, I think I'm going to direct council's attention to the distribution. We received a letter on November 24 from the Central Fraser Valley Search and Rescue Society. I'm sure everybody's seen that correspondence. I just printed it out. I don't have which distribution it's on, but I do have a motion here that the annual funding for the Central Fraser Valley Search and Rescue be maintained for 2025 and 2026, funded with 2025 surplus funds within the 2026 budget. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Counselor Rint. So I think everyone's seen the correspondence. I think it is appropriate to, based on my conversations with them, I think it's appropriate. I have another secondary motion here as well related, related to them, but this one is to restore the funding. If this isn't approved, then there'd be no need for the second one. And so I think in their conversations, they outlined for me, you know, that some of the processes that they go through and some of the, maybe some notice would be, would be appropriate if this is the direction that council's going to go. So for 2025 and 2026, I think it's appropriate that we leave the status quo in place, and we'll see if council agrees. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I have a procedural question here, because it seems to me it's come up in other meetings of council. If an item is in a closed meeting, how can it appear in an open meeting before the closed meeting?
Yeah, so the letter that I'm referring to here, November 24, and we've all received emails from them, those are all on the open distribution. Ms. Counselor Richter?
No, I think it's a question of process, isn't it?
Not for me, but if you wish to praise a point of order or make an amendment?
Well, yeah, it's a point of order.
What is, what is your point of order?
If it's on a closed agenda and will be dealt with on a closed agenda, why is it now in an open agenda?
Ms. Power, can you clarify the motion on the floor versus, I guess, what Counselor Richter has just announced is on the closed agenda? I think we're seeing repeated breaches of closure just over and over again. Not sure what to be doing with that. But Ms. Power, maybe you can highlight that this is a public letter, their funding request is in the public letter, and I haven't making a motion to respond to that request on the public agenda. Or somebody.
Yes, that, that item was on the distribution list, which is publicly available. I believe it was on the November 24 distribution list, and I believe you're, under other business, you have raised that item, that it was on the distribution list and have made a motion accordingly.
Okay, well...
Ms. Counselor Richter, you had a point of order, though, so I'd like to resolve your point of order. Your point of order is that the motion is not in order because you've now revealed that it's on the closed agenda? Is that your point of order?
No, I want to know why some people can do it and other people can't, basically.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, we did have a discussion on a very similar issue at the start of the last three meetings.
I'm not sure what you're referring to. Can you clarify what you're referring to?
No, I can't.
Okay, so you won't clarify. So it's hard to rule on your point of order if your basis for the point of order is different rules for different members of council?
Okay, well, I just want to make note of what I consider to be procedural fairness, and I think what is happening right now is not procedurally fair. That's the point of order I'm making.
So it's procedurally unfair because it's...
You're putting words in my mouth. I'm quite capable of speaking for myself. Thank you.
So maybe I, maybe I should play it back. Did you not just say it's procedurally unfair?
In my opinion, it is.
So if you're saying it's procedurally unfair, I'm not sure what the basis is to conclude that when it's responding to a letter on the public agenda for a request for funding to be reinstated for search and rescue programs.
Well, I don't understand why perhaps it couldn't have been left for December 15.
Well, if you wish to move deferral, you could, you could do that, but I'm still focused on your point of order related to, you've now revealed that it's on the special closed agenda, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but now you're muddying the waters.
Well, I think it's pretty clear you've just breached closed, like, and so I think you have revealed the agenda of closed meetings to the public. Have you not?
No, I have not.
You have not?
I said if. I raised a procedural question, and I used the word if.
I think, I'll play it back, I think I heard the word when. I think we don't want to get too bogged down on this. We can certainly follow up on this. I mean, this is, this is now hitting multiple breaches of closed, and I'm just going to admit, I don't really know what to do with it.
No, it's not...
I'll reiterate again, if you can please conduct yourself accordingly within the bounds of the council procedure bylaw and our code of conduct.
Well, that is a two-way street, Mr. Mayor.
So, I mean, just these repeated breaches, I mean, we have to deal with this in some way, and honestly, for the public, we don't know what to do with these repeated breaches. So I'm going to go back to the motion as it's on the floor. Again, I'm going to repeat the motion that the annual funding of the Central Fraser Valley Search and Rescue be maintained for 2025 and 2026, funded with 2025 surplus funds within the 2026 budget. Counselor Martins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate this motion coming forward, because in fact, search and rescue were called out recently by the RCMP in searching for a missing 14-year-old autistic person, and their services were required. And I know how valuable they are, and I think that's great to see that we are continuing with the funding of the requests in this letter. So thank you for that.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I'm also supportive of this. I think they provide a lot of good things for our community and help in areas where others are unable to, and so I'm supportive of this. I don't think it's a large amount of money in our budget, but it certainly brings a lot of peace of mind to a lot of people in our community.
Counsel Ferguson?
I too also want to echo what's already been said by my colleagues. I mean, this organization's been around with a mixture of professional and volunteer forces, helping out the community, it's a large community township of Langley, 300 square kilometers. What they do is due diligence and under all sorts of different conditions, because it's always, not always sunny outside, it's not always light. They're working under dark, darkness sometimes, and also under conditions that are cold and dreary. Thank you, I appreciate all the work they do.
Counsel Currie?
Yeah, I support this, and one thing that I really like about this motion is that it's realigning where the money comes from. It's coming out now, it's going to come out of a dedicated line item instead of coming out of the fire department's budget. And I believe, and why I bring that up, is because if you look at the, the number of calls that these search and rescue deal with, very rarely do they get called out in a context of anything to do with fire. The vast majority of the calls are with service to the RCMP, and from what I understand, they do that very well. So I am, I'm very glad to see that the realignment of this money is going into a budget instead of coming out of the fire department's budget.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and it's the intent of this motion is to basically relocate the funding from existing budgets to a separate line item. So I'll call the question on the first motion. That carries unanimously. Now that that's been supported, I have a second motion, that the Central Valley, Central Fraser Valley Search and Rescue be requested to provide to council by the end of Q2 2026, a summary of the calls for service and overall tangible and intangible value provided to the township Langley, and that's seconded by Counselor Bailey. So the intent of this motion here is, I think, get in writing for, for council, for staff, and for the public, you know, what this Central Valley Fraser Valley Search and Rescue does and how they're dealing with maybe some, some issues around who funds what and how much is being contributed by each member that contributes to this. So I think there's some, some good information that council can get in writing from this group versus, you know, what I received verbally and some other communications, I'm sure conversations with multiple members of council. I think it'd be brilliant critical to get that in writing and then get that into the public hands. So that, is there any other discussion on that request? Seeing none, call the question on that request. So that carries unanimously. Okay, so is there any other business? All right, so does anybody have any items they wish to add to closed? Counselor Bailey?
Oh, it just, your light turned on here without my...
Counsel Pratt?
I have a legal item for closed.
What category?
It would be property, sorry.
Property, so property item, any other items for closed? Seeing none, can I get a motion to resolve into closed as amended, moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Bailey? Get, just call the question on that. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed, get a motion to terminate, moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Bailey, all is in favor, opposed. That carries, thank you.